Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call for order regular planning commission meeting. City of Campbell, California, October the 11th, 2022. Mr. Clerk, could we have a roll call, please? Commissioner Fields?
Present.
Commissioner Sizer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Trosky?
Here.
Commissioner Craig?
Here.
Commissioner Campcar? Vice Chair Buckbinder?
Present.
Chair Ching?
Present.
Okay, thank you. So moving on to the approval of the minutes for August 23rd. Have we had a chance to review any comments, alterations?
All of the same.
Okay, thank you. Which case do I hear? Proposal to approve the minutes?
I'll approve of the minutes.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Sizer?
Aye.
Commissioner Trosky?
All of the same.
Commissioner Craig?
Aye.
Vice Chair Buckbinder?
Aye.
Chair Ching?
Aye.
So moving on to the next section, communications, agenda modifications or postponements. Correct, Reese Wood, do we have any tonight?
Yes. Robbie Stewart, Community Home Director, Communications. We have one desk item on item number one. Hope you all have it, and Tracy will introduce that item. No agenda modifications or postponements. Thanks.
Thank you. So at this point of the agenda, I'll open, open hearing up to any or requests from the public. This is the point on the agenda where members of the public may address the commission on items of concern to the community that are not listed on the agenda this evening. People may speak up to five minutes on any matter concerning the commission. Open up. Not seeing anybody closing it, and then moving on to the first of two items for tonight. And before we go on to those items, do I have any disclosures from my fellow commissioners? Okay, so first item for this evening is PLN-2022-13. Public hearing to consider the request of TDD Gus applicant for owner for property located at 1429 and 1445 Westmont Avenue to allow for revisions to the architectural design and changes in floor area of a previously approved planned development permit for six locked, single-family house subdivision. And to extend the approval of the previously approved tentative map. The application under consideration includes a major planned development permit modification and an extension of approval. File number PLN-2022-13. Staff is recommending this item be deemed categorically exempt from CEQA. And the tentative city council meeting date is November the 15th, 2022. Project planner Tracy Tam, associate planner. Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you, everyone, commissioners. So the project site is located at 1429 and 1445 Westmont Avenue. It is located in the Santa Moss area of the city. Res zoning is planned development as the property was rezoned in 2019. Some of you may remember that proposal. The general plan designation is low-density residential, allowing for less than six dwelling units per the gross acre. The project site, as you can see on the screenshot there, is surrounded by single-family residential uses on all sides. And so I had mentioned there was a zoning change that was approved by the city council 2019. Along with that zone change was also a request for a planned development permit and a tentative map. And this was all to allow for the construction of six detached, two-story, single-family residences served by a private street. Now, the project in front of you today doesn't propose to change any of the site layout or the lot sizes, nothing of that nature, but rather just request architectural modifications for area changes and of course, the extension of the tentative map. So the request before you is a major planned development, planned development modification permit to allow for changes in architecture and floor area and extension approval for the tentative map. The essential approval is to allow the tentative map to have an extra two years of life. Now to set the map, but with your approval, the map is expected to expire on February 1st, 2025. Previously, it was expected to expire February 1st, 2023. So the applicant is requesting a two-year extension. So just to sort of walk you through what was previously approved and what is proposed today. So the image that you're seeing on the top of the screen is the previous site plan. You'll notice that the access is off Westmont Avenue served by a private street. And the parking spaces indicated by triangles there, those are the guest parking spaces. And you'll see that most of the homes front on the private street with the exception of the first home, which actually has its entrance off Westmont Avenue. The proposed site plan, which is the image below, virtually shows the same sort of configuration with the private street access off Westmont Avenue, the guest parking spaces along the private street, and then five of the homes fronting onto that private street with the first home front having their front door off Westmont Avenue. To give you a little flavor of what the previous architectural design was. And so the homes more, more or less were craftsman style, ranch style, and Tudor-inspired homes. The image on the lower left-hand corner, that's an example of like a Tudor-style home with the roof pitches. The home sort of in the middle section there is a Craftsman-inspired home. And then the two on the upper left and upper right of the screen are sort of the Prairie-style Ranch-style homes that were previously approved by the city council. And so what the applicant is requesting is to change the architectural design. You'll still notice that there are some Craftsman-inspired homes. Notably, the images, the four homes on the left-hand side of the screen, those are sort of all Craftsman-style with the corbels, the horizontal and vertical wood siding, which are very traditional Craftsman-style materials. The homes, the two homes on the right-hand side of the screen, those are a more contemporary, you can kind of call it a farmhouse modern sort of architectural style, where it is mostly comprised of light-smooth stucco, relatively simple roof lines. That's sort of seen in all the homes. And the colors and materials and the architectural style of these homes are supported by the Santa Moss Area Neighborhood Plan. The Santa Moss Area Neighborhood Plan does call for more traditional materials such as stucco, the wood siding, very kind of simple roof lines, sipped and gabled roofs, things like that. So that the applicant is complying with the architectural intent of the Santa Moss Area Neighborhood Plan. So I know there's a lot of numbers in front of you, but I just wanted to show the, in the request, there's also a slight change to the floor area. I think there's an overall decrease in actually the square footage, about 10 square feet total. So it's pretty minor, less than 10 square feet, so pretty minor change. And so it's sort of capsulated here on the table on the top. What was previously approved as far as square footage of the home, the floor area ratio and then the lot coverage. And the table on the bottom there is what is proposed today. And the sort of calculation on the right is just the overall increase or decrease in the building square footage. So to place, do I think about three square feet of difference, it's actually a decrease. But more or less, the FER, the floor area ratio and a lot of coverage remains as a whole largely the same. And I should note here that the project is in compliance with the floor area ratio, lot coverage. Floor area ratio maximum is 45%, lot coverage maximum is 40% as mandated by the Santa Moss Area Neighborhood Plan. So earlier today, a desk item memo was sent out related to a modification to condition of approval number two and a modification to the resolution itself. To sort of encapsulate what the desk item memo stated. The modification to conditional, condition of approval number two is related to the expiration date. So as mentioned, the project was approved in 2019, in which a two-year approval was granted. Now during the pandemic, Governor Newsom signed Assembly Bill 1561, which allowed for an automatic 18-month extension for land use approvals related to housing, understanding that construction activities were impacted by the pandemic. And so that sort of puts the new expiration dates as February 1st, 2025. Now, I had mentioned earlier that the applicant is requesting a extension of approval on the tentative map of two years. And, and the municipal code allows for PD permits and modifications such as this to have a two-year approval as well. And so the change to condition of approval number two is to extend the life of the approval of the planned development permit and also the tentative map to February 1st, 2025. The second item that was noted in the desk item memo is related to the resolution. And so for major planned development permit modifications, the Planning Commission acts as a recommending body to the city council. And so the resolution does need to reflect that. Currently, it does say that Planning Commission is approving the major plan, major planned development permit modification, when in fact, it should say it's a recommending body to council. So that's the second request under the desk item memorandum. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval to the city council the approval, on the approval of this project, as noted as the desk item memorandum. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Tracy. Any questions, Tracy?
I noticed the packet page 13 says that there are employee, employee break rooms in the buildings, but I didn't see any mention. And that didn't seem like the sort of thing you would have in a single-family home. Is that just an error?
Correct, yes. I apologize. I didn't mistype.
Oh, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something. I have a procedural, sort of a procedural question, which is this, I see this is titled a major planned development permit modification permit, but this seems really minor. Is the reason this is coming back because this is PD zoning and PD zoning is very, very specific? And if, for example, this was in a, an R1 zone or something like that, that they would just have to go through plan check again?
Right. So you're absolutely correct because it isn't a planned development zoning district. At the 2019 approval, there was a certain expectation of what the homes were going to look like. Now, if the homes largely remained the same, minor tweaks here and there. Let's say if window was made smaller or bigger, something like that would likely not have to go back to public hearing. But because the, you can tell the face of the project, all the facades of the project are changing to different architectural style in addition to the floor area changes, that's the reason why it needs to go back through this hearing process.
So would the architectural changes have necessitated a hearing back up to the city council if this was not using PD zoning?
It may, yeah, it may not have had to go to council in the first place. The sort of kicker here is that because of the PD zoning change that was done in 2019 to change the property to PD zoning, the code doesn't, the code requires public frontage, a minimum width of public frontage for properties. And because there's only one home in this subdivision that is served by a public street, Westmont Avenue, and the rest of the homes are served by that private street, that is not allowed in conventional zoning. And so if, if the site was reoriented or reworked where there wasn't a private street, then the permitting process would actually, I believe, stop at the planning commission level, assuming no PD zoning, because it would be a site-anarch permit, which is heard by the planning mission, not by the city council.
Right. So in a counterfactual world in which you didn't need a PD zone in order to do, or a PD permit in order to do a private road, then, okay, I understand. Thank you.
Just for my own edification, the deadline for the extension of the permit, the deadline, what does the deadline mean? Does it mean, what has to be done before the deadline?
So the deadline means for the planned development permit, it means that a building permit needs to be obtained by that deadline for the tentative map, and means that a final map needs to be approved by council and recorded with the county. So there is an action that happens after this in which the applicant would need to comply by to sort of vest this permit. So it's valid. Because let's say if the applicant doesn't exercise on the permit, they don't obtain a building permit, they don't file for, you know, they don't get their final map approval or recorded with the county. That means the permits are expired, and if they wanted to do the same, they would have to go through the same process as before.
If there's no further questions, I'll open it up to public comment. Would the applicant like to speak, please?
Testing. Great. Good evening. My name's Kelly Arrody. My address is Seven McGregor Place, Danville, California, and here representing the applicant. First, I'd like to thank all you for your time. I'd like to give a special thanks to Tracy Tam for all the time she spent on this project and made it a better project. I'll be brief because her staff report is very thorough. And the main purpose we're here is we wanted to make the project, we thought our team could make the project a little better architecturally and the floor plans a little more functional to be more successful in the, in the marketplace. Our architectural team is here if you have any questions. And like Tracy said, I think we've conformed to the specific plan area there. And we've even added a couple junior ADUs to even more specifically conform. With that, I will take questions or sit down.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioner Craig?
Just a question, Mr. Arrody, just real quickly, is the ownership, the ownership group's listed as an LLC, but is it all new owners since the original ownership?
Yes, it's a, it's a purchase from the previous ownership group, and it's all new owners.
And have you done other projects where the JADU was a factor in, in, in the design?
This group, the architectural group, has a lot of the projects that they're currently doing. They're working with junior ADUs, ADUs, SB9 applications. So the short answer is yes.
I was just interested, I thought that was interesting item. Thanks.
Thank you.
I was originally going to ask what happened that the first one didn't get developed, but it sounds like you are not the people who got the first approval?
That's correct.
Okay, so you wouldn't, I suppose it doesn't really matter why they didn't develop it. Thank you for clearing that up.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you.
I don't see any other public comments in the room, any online, which point I'll close the hearing for public comment and a note to my fellow commissioners. Commissioner Craig?
I remember the original project, and we even had a workshop too that was pretty good. And we went through this pretty, pretty well. And I think there's some residents from Jasmine Court that originally spoke. I guess we haven't gotten any comments from neighbors on the, on the changes. Anyway, my, 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 just my two comments is, and I think, I think it's fine. And I think when the square footage was added, you know, to the second floor versus the first, I would have thought you can, you know, result in a bulkier buildings. But according to the architectural drawings, they really look very nice. So if that happens with other projects where they're looking at a JADU potential, I hope that they all do as well. And really, you know, I guess that was it. I think it was relatively minor, minor changes and it looked okay to me. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, seems like a thoughtful reconsideration, the kind of thing that makes sense. I also liked the JADUs makes them more attractive, so no.
Yeah, we went, I got a chance to see this in a SARC meeting, we could do that. So it looks really good to me. I did have another question though. It's actually the Commissioner Buckbinder brought up in the SARC meeting, I believe. It, it's about the trash, how the trash gets, gets collected. Because Commissioner Buckbinder had a concern about whether it was going to be, you know, eight bins on the street or 12 bins on the street. But I, I think I remember, I'm not sure I remember the answer to it, whether the garbage truck backs into the space to pick up the bins in front of their houses, but I'd like a clarification on that.
Yeah, absolutely. So the bins are placed along the private street. The private street is enough, is sufficient width to accommodate the trash provider vehicles. And so they won't be placed on Westmont Avenue, but rather they'll be placed on the private street that you see there.
Thank you.
Commissioner Trosky?
Yeah, I think the new design, that's really great. I think it is more modern. And I also agree that it will be more appealing to buyers. So I think that's a great update. And yeah, the relocation of the square footage from the first floor to the second floor does make that upstairs more open and livable. And so with the JADUs, it's a very nice update to the original project. Thank you.
Thank you.
I second what the rest of the commissioners are saying. I think it's a fine project. I have opinions about, like, this seems like a pretty trivial change. And I look forward to us having less process around changes this size. Additionally, just a note from SARC that we had asked about asked about them having more permeable pavers, but they cannot do that because the fire department needs strong impermeable, impermeable pavement to drive their fire trucks on. So that, we asked and answered that.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion for approval?
Sure, I'll recommend that the planning commission adopt the resolution with the, with the recent changes. Recommending the city council approve a major plan development permit modification, extension of approval, PLN 2022-13, to allow for the revisions to the architectural design and changes in floor area for previously approved planned development permit for a six lot, single family house subdivision at Doe 1429 and 1445 Westmont Avenue, and to extend the approval of the previously approved tentative map and finding of the project categorically exempt under section 15332 of the California Environmental Quality Act. And that would be extending the approval of the previous tentative map to the new date that Tracy gave, which I think was February 1st, 2025. Is that correct? Yeah.
Thank you. Second, I'll second. Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioner Fields?
Hi.
Commissioner Suzer?
Hi.
Commissioner Ostrowski?
Hi.
Commissioner Craig?
Hi.
Vice Chair Buckbinder?
Hi.
Chair Jing?
Hi.
So that's carried unanimously and will be heard in front of the council, tentative date November the 15th. So thank you and good luck with your development. So moving on to the second item for tonight, PLN-2022-38, public hearing to hear the request of Torrance Delgado, SDA Inc. for property located at 1480 West Campbell Avenue to allow a new government office and facilities, e.g. Social Security Administration, within an existing commercial building and a reduction to the required number of parking spaces. The application under consideration includes a conditional use permit and parking modification permit for number PLN-2022-38. Staff is recommending this item be deemed categorically exempt from SECR. Planning commission action is final unless appealed in writing to the city clerk within 10 calendar days. Project planner, Tracy Tam.
Thank you. So the project site is located at 1480 West Campbell Avenue, on the southeast corner of Campbell Avenue and Santa Mas Aquino Road. And the zoning and general plan is general commercial. I should note that the Social Security Administration, who is proposing to occupy this building, does currently operate in Campbell. They're located at 770 West Hamilton Avenue. The previous use for the site has been a various, a, a number of financial institutions, the latest being US Bank site. It was occupied by a liquor store, I think, at least 10 years ago, but largely has been operating as, or used as a bank and financial institution. So the request before you tonight is a conditional use permit to allow for a government office, specifically the Social Security Administration, to locate within an existing commercial building. They are proposing our staff offers of operation from 7:00 AM to 5:00 3:00 AM, only open Monday through Friday, and then business hours from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, again, Monday through Friday. Along with the conditional use for our request is a parking modification permit to allow for the reduction and the required number of parking spaces. The municipal code requires 36 parking spaces based on the parking ratio, and the site currently has 22 parking spaces. I should note here that the Social Security Administration does need to relocate to this proposed location as the, the existing building they're in doesn't meet federal seismic requirements. For the applicant, the, the federal size requirements are more stringent than California requirements. And so therefore, the current building does not meet their requirements to locate in it, therefore they do need to locate to the proposed site. There are other social security offices located in the South Bay area, one being in Central San Jose, I think it's closer to downtown San Jose. And there's a location in Mountain View, but this Campbell location mostly will, will serve most of the West Valley communities, like West San Jose, Los Canos, Montessorano, Saratoga, Cupertino, to name a few cities. So the image that you see on the left-hand side, this is the proposed site plan. There aren't really any changes to the site plan. The intent is for really them to just move in, do a tenant improvement to the building, which you can see the proposed floor plan on the right. So on the right, you'll see a handful of interview bays, as they call them, but rather it's a place for folks can do, you know, come in to have an appointment or come in to receive services. There is a waiting area in front, and the, most of the square footage, two-thirds probably of the square footage is used for cubicle for Social Security Administration employees, also a training room, break room, bathrooms, things like that. So a third-party parking consultant, W Trans, they did conduct a parking study on the requests of staff. And the purpose of the parking study was to really determine the number of peak parking spaces needed for the proposed use at the location. To conduct this parking study, W Trans did use some data supplied by the applicant, such as the number of employees, the type of employees, and in-field observations, and the Institute of Transportation Engineer Manual, which is ITE for short. The ITE manual, they publish what a typical parking ratio is, and they use data based on local, state, and federal offices in different jurisdictions and different states, and they sort of combine all the information together to sort of have a a parking ratio suggestion. Now, I should note that the parking consultant did note that because of how the ITE aggregates all this data and may not actually reflect the local demand and the local situation at hand. So the parking consultant did state that generally local data should be used in favor of the ITE manual. I had mentioned that the third-party consultant of W Trans did conduct in-person field observations, so it was over a period of four days. And during that observation period, they did observe that 27 spaces at noon was, was sort of the peak demand at the existing location with an average at 17 parking spaces. Now, the parking study did conclude that the proposed use of the proposed location would result in a peak demand of 21 parking spaces, and there are 22 parking spaces on site. With that, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit and parking modification permit to allow for the government office and facility use for the Social Security Administration and a reduction to the required number of parking spaces, as code requires. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Tracy. Any questions, Soft? Please, Commissioner Craig.
Yeah, I actually do have a number of questions here on this one, Tracy. I live pretty close to the site and everything, but I, my first question would be, so the building, you know, hasn't changed, and the number of parking spaces was there from the beginning. So was the building built with insufficient number of parking spaces to begin with? Or was it envisioning a different use where the parking would have been less?
So that's a great question. When the building was originally constructed, there was a reduction in parking spaces requested at the time of that approval in which it was granted.
And I think it was, I don't know if it was, I can't remember if it was for a bank from the get-go or what. I've lived there a long time, but I.
I believe the first use to ever occupy the building was for a liquor store. And then subsequently, it's been a number of bank and financial services, with the latest one being US Bank.
And, and, you know, the commission's done a lot of work recognizing that, for the most part, you know, City of Campbell is way over in terms of how much parking. We've done a lot of, Commissioner Buckbinder especially, we've done a lot of good work on that. But I, I was struck by the difference between the ITE's standard and the city's standard. Thirty-six spaces, city standard versus the Institute of Traffic Engineers calls for 24 spaces. That's like a 25% difference. So I, I, so my question for you then specifically is two questions related to that fact. One would be, is this, are we in, in effect going with the ITE standards for Campbell? And my second question would be, is this typical? That, that the ITE standards are so much less than the City of Campbell standards?
Yeah, so I can kind of tackle your questions both at the same time. So I guess to answer your first question, though, we're not recommending that we go with ITE standards because we do agree with the parking consultant that local demand could be different. Although in this case, ITE standards saying 24 spaces, when the parking consultant peak demand is saying 21 spaces, so it is pretty close. The other component of your question, the parking code doesn't have a separate parking standard for government office. So that means that we are using, under code requirements, we are using the professional office parking requirements. But as you can, you can understand, the, the function of a government office could be quite different than a function of a professional office. Just like, say, like a tech company or something like that. Because the parking chapter of the code doesn't provide a different ratio for a government office versus a professional office, we are required to use this closest aligning parking ratio, which is the professional office one at 1.25.
And I, I don't know if the, if the applicant or the parking consultants are here, I don't see anybody in the audience, but so maybe these questions aren't, aren't good for you, but so when we, when we hired the third-party parking consultant, who, who pays for that? Is it the city or the, the federal government or?
So the contract is with the city to reduce any kind of conflict of, of interest. It is paid for by the applicant. So it typically happens when there is a need for these kind of technical studies to be done. The city staff will ask the applicant to, to put a deposit. City staff will create an invoice for a deposit to be paid by the applicant. And then we, the city, will pay, using as a pass-through fee, we will pay the consultant directly. So there is no exchange of funds from the applicant to the third-party consultant directly. It's really to keep that firewall, and same as, you know, having the contract with the consultant with staff instead of the applicant to sort of keep the firewall so it can be objective, it can be, you know, no, no conflict of interest issues there.
And the city's not going to lose any money on that?
Correct, no, this is paid for by the applicant, yeah.
Do you, 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 this is kind of tough questions maybe, but do you know, is the, is the Campbell site, the new site, is that, is that, are there as many bus routes there as there are on the current Hamilton site?
I believe there are the same bus routes, given that they're both larger terials.
They're both pretty similar, probably, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Do you, so I, I, and this is really, you don't know if the, so the Social Security Administration apparently is going from an average of 17 employees on the site to an average of eight employees. Are they, and I guess they're trying to move more online, is that the idea? And, and, and so they're going to have fewer interact, in-person interactions with, with people?
Correct, that's my understanding. It's from my conversations with the applicant, and most of the services that they provide can be done online or by phone. The services that do need in-person visits, an example is visa applications, where you do, are required to show physical documentation in person, or if there is an issue with potentially fraudulent activity, you do have to do those services in person. But for the most part, all services they, they provide can be done online or by, by phone call.
Well, because it seems like that's, you know, it's a, you know, I'm one of the few, I'm, I'm one of the older people, so I've been in that, in, in the building a few times as a customer, and I know it's always packed and crowded. So, so the Social Security Administration is changing quite a bit of their work, apparently, if they're going to go to half-staff. But we don't, we don't know that exactly, but
Right.
To figure that out a little bit. It was, it just kind of, the whole thing kind of surprised me, to be honest. The situation there, but I know, I know we have, in our report, we have a lot of items that we're, we're asking for mandatory review after a year on this whole thing. And there's a lot of things that we can do. Do you know if, in terms of, you know, the government should be setting the example for the private sector, so we should be a little bit tougher, I think, in the government uses, in my particular opinion. But this would be a good case where the federal government should almost, it, it'd come up at all as a possibility that the city would require the, the Social Security Administration to give bus passes to all their employees. And then we would see, I wonder if they would all use, I wonder how many, it would be a good, it would be a good experiment to see how many employees, once they're given a bus pass, how many would use it? Has that, did that come up at all in, in your deliberations?
It did. Staff had a couple of potential operational constraints to ensure that the demand for parking doesn't exceed what is provided on site. But it, it is tough because the Social Security Administration is a federal entity, and so requiring operational changes such as bus passes, things like that, can get quite complicated quite quickly. And I believe the applicant can probably speak a little bit better that, to that than I can.
I know, I'm trying to put you on the spot here, but and just one other question, one final question, that a little bit from a different angle. In terms of the original building that the Social Security Administration is in right now, which apparently doesn't meet the earthquake code. So when they move out and that building still doesn't meet the earthquake code, does that building have to be improved to the earthquake code before a new tenant moves in? Just curious about that.
Well, so I, I believe the, the federal requirement for federal offices for seismic, there, there's, the federal seismic requirements are different than state requirements. So while the building doesn't currently meet the federal seismic requirements of what the, the federal government requires their offices to be at that standard, it may not necessarily mean that it's just simply not earthquake compliant as a whole.
Okay, okay, I got you. Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I noticed there's like extensive interior changes they're going to do, but the only thing I could see about the exterior was like a mention of some windows. Are they doing anything else? Because it's, it's been around forever, sort of bland looking. I just wondered if they were going to paint or do anything else when they were doing like a lot interior on the exterior of the building as part of this?
As far as I know, the, the exterior scope is really limited to the windows that you had pointed, sort of. I believe that would be the south of the site. I will note that the building has been previously updated. There was, I believe, a site and arc permit to update the facade, to sort of create that entry element that you're seeing on the building today. But I don't believe that there are changes to, further change to the architecture of the building.
So I actually, it's many of the same concerns that Commissioner Craig had in terms of, you know, so I, I don't know who, who answers these questions, whether you can answer these questions or not, but first of all, I'm glad that they didn't use the ITE, you're not using the ITE standard, because it doesn't seem like it's, it's relevant anyway. Because if I read it right, it's, they lump all government buildings that are 50,000 to 100,000 square feet in, and find the average. So this seems totally irrelevant. But I also have a quick, just another comment before I have the question, is that there's a mention of, of mentioning that the arterial roads, the Campbell and Santa Mas Aquino, those kinds of roads normally have on-street parking. It's in their, it's in their report, which implies to me that they were suggesting maybe there's going to be available on-street parking, but there is no on-street parking there at all. So, so I, you know, I have a concern about the parking because it's so dramatically lessened. And so my question, one of the questions I have is, well, you know, they're dropping, apparently they're supposedly dropping the employees in half, but their, their layout has 12, 12 interview cubicles, but they're not going to have that many employees. So, so I guess my question is, why is there 12 interview cubicles if they're not, if they're only going to have normally seven people there, of which probably no more than six are going to be doing interviews? So, so I have a question about that. I also have a question about why, why, why the peak demand goes down. You mentioned something about the peak demand.
I also have a question about why, why the peak demand goes down. You mentioned something about the peak demand is going down from twenty-seven to twenty-one or something, right? I'm not quite sure why that number decreases. Um, by the way, I was there today, and maybe today's a, a really peaked, but there were, there were twenty-seven cars in the parking lot when I was there, and the place was full up with people. There were a dozen, two dozen people waiting.
I, I was there twice today.
Yeah.
So. I, I, I know we're not doing discussion yet, but I'll say that.
So, um, so I have a question about the, about the peak demand decrease, um, and, um, and, and a question about, uh, you know, the, the question about what, whether they're really planning for only seven or eight employees. So.
So based on my discussion with the applicant, and they're, um, they are attending virtually, unfortunately not feeling too well tonight, so they are attending virtually. Uh, but based on my conversations with the applicant, the idea with the twelve interview bays is to also provide areas where people can fill out paperwork if they need to. So not necessarily needing to use all the bays for a staff member and a member of the public, rather providing some space where people can, you know, sit down, have a desk, fill out paperwork as they, as they need to. Um, your question regarding the peak parking demand decreasing, so there's a couple of different factors here. It's based on the, um, the, the the infield observation, in addition to the decrease in the number of employees, so essentially scaling it down. Uh, the, the parking demand, scaling it down from the employees, and because there are, I believe, uh, seventeen at a current location, going down to eight, the parking number, in addition to using the average parking data on the existing site, scales down to this site. That's sort of how the report was structured, to arrive at the conclusion that a peak parking demand at the current location, scaling down, would be twenty-one parking spaces.
Do you, do you know if they, this is, uh, they do, they hand to appointments, or is this just walk-in? Do you know if, how that works?
Yeah, so they do both. They highly encourage folks to make appointments, uh, just be, just to, um, have an expectation of when they could be, um, you know, serviced, and also what these services, what kind of request services are coming in. But the office, I believe, does accept both, both walk-in and appointments.
Thanks.
I just wanted to make a comment that if anyone did conduct a site, uh, inter, or visit the site, that is the kind of information that needs to be disclosed prior to opening the public hearing.
Thank you.
Uh, I guess I'm surprised to hear that because I visit every site. Every single site. I've never missed one, and I've never disclosed that, so make this a blanket disclosure. I, I would think most of us are doing that, but, uh, yeah, I'm sorry, I did. I just never expected that.
It's, uh, to provide a, a due process opportunity for anyone, uh, who's going to be speaking under public comments to respond to any observations that you may have made that are gonna be pertinent to your decision.
Yeah, I was just thinking that if I happened to run into an applicant or an owner when I was at the site, that I would disclose that, but otherwise, you know, I haven't been doing that, so I'll, I'll do that in the future, but thank you.
Actually, that's a really good point. I didn't know that because I understood if we spoke to somebody there or the applicant, we'd have to disclose it, but just turning up, I didn't realize that.
The, the general rule is, any information upon which you are going to rely in making your decision that was not in the, in the staff report or presented by staff, needs to be disclosed prior to opening the public hearing.
Thank you. Good to meet you. Any further questions for staff?
Uh, just want to, um, uh, add a note that, um, I, I've heard some concerns about the difference between, um, government office and professional office. I, I looked it up, the I T's, um, parking ratio for government office, which is their code seven thirty, is two point nine nine per a thousand square feet. Uh, seven twelve small office building, which is roughly what this is, is lower, two point fifty-six per thousand square feet. That would be twenty-one parking spaces as opposed to twenty-four. So like, even if, like, the I T is not exactly a loophole here. It's just that our, as I understand it, our parking requirements are oddly high. I did have a question for staff, and I'm not just monologuing here. Why does this require a conditional use permit? This seems like a very normal use for the building.
The government office specifically is a enumerated, or it says government office and facilities parentheses, local, state, federal is how it's categorized in the code, and it's actually an enumerated use. So while the parking part of it doesn't have a separate government office parking standard, the use table does differentiate government offices from professional offices. And professional offices are allowed by right in the C two zoning district, but the government office and facilities, local, state, federal is a enumerated use that requires a conditional use permit.
Is there anywhere where government offices are allowed by right? Is this just, it's not in C two zones, or is that always discretionary?
Uh, it is always discretionary.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no more questions, I'll open up to the public hearing.
Torres Delgado, you are, um, allowed to speak. Go ahead.
Uh, actually, this is, um, if you can hear me, uh, this is Mark Biagiani. I am the president of S D A, uh, Incorporated of Denver, Colorado. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, it's, it's coming through.
Thank you. And I do apologize, we could not be there, uh, ourselves, but, uh, uh, with young children, we, uh, it seems to be that time of the year when they have infected all of us. So we, uh, decided it would best to do it this way. Uh, I wanted to thank all of you for, uh, your time here, especially Rob Eastwood and Tracy Tam on their work, uh, uh, over this for the last, uh, four or five months, trying to work through the, uh, potential, uh, parking issues here. As Tracy mentioned, uh, the current facility, uh, does meet, I, I believe, uh, the, uh, California seismic codes. The federal code is, uh, there is some more stringent, uh, stringent places in that. So from a federal standpoint, uh, the social security administration cannot actually lease that facility and will have to move out soon. Uh, in speaking with us, the only facility within the city of Campbell that we were ever able to identify was this building at, uh, fourteen eighty West Campbell. Social Security is, uh, very excited. They do, uh, look forward to, uh, moving into just a, a newer, fresher facility. As some of you mentioned, you've been there. I've, I've been to the existing facility, and, uh, it is certainly a much older facility, uh, which is one of the other reasons they are, uh, changing square footage requirements. Uh, the, the total square footage, I do believe, is also a little bit smaller, uh, than the current facility. But this is, uh, this has been something that the social security administration has been changing since, uh, COVID happened, as they've realized that they are, uh, able to start getting, uh, their usual clients, uh, to start using more online services. And for the last two years nationwide, this has become the newer model where they are working many, many more people from home and, uh, uh, doing more of a call center, uh, approach. The goal over the next five years for social security is actually to reduce in-person visits by almost fifty percent nationwide, uh, and, and offer as much as possible, uh, online and/or call center visits, uh, excluding those visits that have to be done, uh, as mandatory, as Tracy mentioned, uh, cases of social security fraud, uh, proving who you are if you're, uh, applying for various visas, et cetera. But this facility in particular does not, uh, uh, have as high a volumes for visas. That primarily is the Mountain View location. So it is a little different facility in that they will not have as many, uh, tech workers and, uh, uh, visa applicants going through that facility. With that, I'll try to answer any questions that I can. This is a leased facility, so it's not owned by the social security administration. So some of the operational questions you might have about social security, I can only, uh, give you, uh, the, the knowledge that they've given me. Uh, but I'll try to answer any questions you might, uh, you might have about the facility.
Thank you all. Any, uh, any questions?
I, I have a question. So you mentioned that the number of visits, the aim is to read, or move them, um, online, move fifty percent of them online? Is the, is that, um, is that also true for moving people nationwide from in-office to remote work?
The, the goal is, yes, the goal is much more at home, or, uh, I'm using the wrong phrase here. It's a remote working uh, for social security administration. They are trying nationwide to actually reduce their footprint. The social security administration, I believe, has roughly eighteen hundred offices nationwide, and the goal is just simply to reduce the footprint and force more online collaboration.
Thank you.
One, uh, particular note, uh, and I don't know if it's in the, the traffic study, but we were able to, um, get average visitors, and I don't have the number in front of me, but it was close, uh, not quite half since COVID of, of a reduction of in-person visits since, uh, the pre-COVID model. Uh, there has been a, they're continuing with a significant reduction uh, in, in, in-person visits.
Thank you. Uh, I did have one question. Do you know, um, if it has a bicycle rack?
Uh, that is actually, that is a requirement. We don't have it in yet, but yes, that would be something we are, we will put a bicycle rack there, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, I think that's the questions, Mark. Thank you, uh, for your, um, uh, commentary.
Thank you all very much.
Any, any other online, at which point I'll close it to the commission. Commission fields.
Uh, I think after hearing some of our conversation, like minor concern over parking, I go to that Goodwill, that lot is completely jammed all the time. You're on a four-way intersection, there's like nowhere else to go. So I would say I'd like mild concern about the parking situation, um, due to some of the sort of in-person reports that we heard earlier today. Uh, but otherwise, I think, seems like an improved space. Uh, interior design makes sense, um, by the overall narrative, but the, the one part that gives me a little bit of pause is the parking.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, I, I think it's a great location, and that, that place has been sitting weed-filled and empty for a while, and, um, I, I used to live over that many years ago and seen the changes. And it's, you know, it's a great location for this, and, um, you know, just, uh, um, the parking. I mean, I don't, I don't see myself, you know, suggesting rejecting it for the lower parking. I, I just, I would hope that, uh, what they're saying in terms of reducing the, you know, people going to the facilities is, is reduced, and that would, that would solve the problem. I mean, I think in the meantime, I mean, pragmatically speaking, there's this big parking lot across the street that's San Tomas Plaza. That's, at least now, it's pretty empty. So that's where people are gonna go if the parking lot's filled up, and the Goodwill was filled up today. Um, uh, which I was kind of surprised, but, um, so I think, you know, you know, I, I think I know what people are gonna do if the parking lot's filled up. Um, uh, and, um, and that, that seems to have a potential, and since there's no street parking. But otherwise, uh, you know, I, I, I like the idea of them using that location, and, um, um, I do, again, I have a concern about, about it overflowing, but I think in the short term, that's probably manageable, and probably doesn't, wouldn't happen very, very often necessarily. So, so I, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm favorable to, to, uh, this moving ahead.
Was there something in the packet about, um, remediation if, um, you get complaints about parking on the street or?
Yeah, it says mandatory review after a year, and there's monitoring program.
Okay, so there's some.
So there's some, there's some kind. And I, I'm assuming that there's nothing you can, I mean, it's, it, when I went out and looked at the property, it's like, okay, there's sixty, whatever number of spaces are there, and that's it. There's nothing, sort of knocking down some of the building, put in more spaces. I'm assuming there's no fix to get some more spaces in there. It just looks to me like it's, it's full. Is that correct?
Right, yeah. We explored a number of things, um, with the applicant, such as closing one of the driveways and to have additional more parking spaces and only have one, the one driveway off Campbell Avenue. That didn't quite work out because the trash enclosure's there, and so it makes it very difficult for the trash surveyor to come on site to, to service the site. We're also exploring, you know, having, keeping that driveway, making it more narrow only for trash, so it'd be a, a right end for the trash, and then exit off Campbell Avenue, but that presented challenges because the net increase in parking spaces was nothing, because the parking, you know, the, the access for the trash, uh, the trash surveyor or provider needs to be of a certain width. We had also looked about, um, you know, angling the spaces, perhaps not ninety-degree, in, you know, you're driving in, but angling them to see if that could net more spaces. Unfortunately, doing that exercise, it wouldn't have netted any additional spaces. So fortunately, we did try to think creatively to, to see if we can get more parking spaces on site, but just with the geometry of the lot and just the angling of the spaces and the width required to, to be able to service the trash, it just simply didn't work out.
That you at least tried to get, squeeze some things in, but, uh, yeah, it looked to me like it wasn't, it's, we're really limited there. Thanks.
Yeah, I think based on the, um, the conditions of approval and, um, and the fact that there is a plan proposed to, to do monitoring and to do a review of the parking um, issues that may come up, I think it's a reasonable path forward, and I really think that, you know, this trend of remote work is just gonna grow, so, and people are gonna be more comfortable. As we've seen a big step change because of COVID, they are gonna be more and more comfortable doing, um, the interactions remotely and the, you know, the remote approach is also gonna become more efficient as that happens, so I support the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Kret.
Yeah, and I, and I agree with really all the comments the commissioner's made, and this would really, this would be a nice use for the site, and I personally, I'm personally happy. It's, I mean, it's walking distance for me. You know, it, it is a con, conundrum, and I, you know, you hate to put too much weight on your personal experiences versus, you know, the science and follow the data, right? Uh, we do know that for the most part, there are by far more places like the San Tomas Shopping Center where it's vacant. We got, there's empty spots like crazy, it's way overparked. There happen to be a few places in Campbell though that are underparked. One commissioner mentioned one, Goodwill, which happens to be right next door to this site. It's packed, always packed. One of the other places I would say is the current social security administration office, which I happen to drive by almost every day. That's my, kind of my route. Uh, I was only in there twice, and that was pre-COVID, packed, packed. Uh, so I got the report, and I, well, I said, well, let me, I'll just go over and, you know, for the heck, do me, do my, do my own little luck, and of course, I went on Monday, not realizing it was a holiday, there wasn't one car there. So, so I wanted information, but I, so I went twice today. And at nine forty-five, there was one vacant spot, it was a handicap spot. There's forty-two spots there now, so there were forty-one cars there at nine forty-five, and just, and I never, you know, I'm not looking scientifically as I drive by, but it always looks, it did not surprise me. But I said, you know, well, let, maybe, you know, it's early in the day, it was a three-day weekend, so I went back two hours later, eleven forty-five, there were six vacant spots. So, you know, my two, my two eyewitness accounts were way more spots, and I, I know the, the parking consultants are, are very reputable. We've used them, the city of Campbell's used them. I know they do a great job. But then you say you got the science versus your limited personal experience, and, you know, um, and it does surprise, it's, so the, the, the questions that people have for the social security administration are often really tough, and, you know, by nature, it's And, you know, by nature, it's it's mostly us older folks who have trouble with it. As as Tracy mentioned in her report, this is an office that's attracting people from all over the West Valley. So I I am, but, you know, obviously, we know the trends and, you know, we're all doing more more stuff online. More people are working online. So, you know, it even though it's so, even though it doesn't pass the small test for me. And, you know, the reason we're here, we're kind of representing people that, you know, that the city, most people aren't gonna look at this. I mean, who the heck is gonna mess with this kind of issue? If there is a parking problem there, I don't know. I don't know where the cars go. The closest place would be Goodwill, and that's packed. So, you know, I guess they go across the street. There's definitely spots that once they're the closest residential street, I think it's the city of San Jose, that Antonio Road Drive. I'm not sure if that's even the right street there, but I mean, there's not, there's not a lot of good options. There's not a lot of good options, and it's older folks. Yeah, so I but I'm always, you know, I'm like personally, one of those people who follow the science. We've got the, we've got the experts telling us it's fine. The other point I did try to make earlier and I'll make now is that, you know, so this is a government use, and they should be showing the example for the private sector. If anything, the requirement, maybe it's unfair, but if anything, the requirement should be tougher for the government. So when the private sector comes out, we say, well, you know, hey, this is what you gave the government, you know, kind of sets the precedent. So yeah, you know, I I at least I'm making my comments here. They're public. I'm I'm holding my nose and 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 going with the science. For me, it's great. For me, it's really great that it's right there. It's a good location. It's sites been been a nice store for a while. I know we considered it for one of our housing sites when we were going through the the housing deliberations. So it'd be nice to have it. It'll be nice to have a real good use and definitely for the Social Security Administration. It definitely is a is a big improvement over, you know, the current site, which is really pretty outdated there. So, you know, I'll go with the science on it. Trust that trust that they did right. I know we've got the mandatory review in the air, and then I know that there's some things we can play around with. If it first comes to worst, but, you know, I just hope this doesn't come back to bite us and be in one of those situations where, hey, this is where you really did have to kind of stand up, and maybe this is one spot, one time where maybe you should have held the line a little bit more. But I think we've we've got the science. We got the we got the report and 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 I'll go with it with, you know, just a little bit of mystery needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Last, Jeff.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank my fellow commissioners for sharing a lot of thoughts on this. When I look at the building from above, I see a parking lot with moderate portion of the space taken up by a building. I note that SDA projects that about a quarter of the people commuting to the future SSA building will use some form of assisted public or private transportation, like rideshare, VTA, paratransit, something like that. I know that the Social Security Administration serves a wide variety of people, but a certain portion of them are elderly or disabled. And I know that elderly or disabled people are less likely to drive themselves. And we I think that on one level, we know that our parking requirements tend to be much higher than national standards. But I can understand being worried about, you know, a year from now, there's some kind of parking apocalypse that's happened. And like I worry that the the consequences of requiring too much parking are a lot quieter than the consequences of requiring too little, which I guess is my long-winded way of saying that I think we should, like, I I agree with the proposal as as proposed. I think this is a reasonable thing to do, especially because it is right next to a number of twenty-six bus stops, which arrive every fifteen minutes. Yeah, those are my thoughts. Thank you. Do I hear a motion for approval? I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution referencing attachment one approving a conditional use permit, PLN twenty twenty-two thirty-eight, to allow government office and facilities within an existing commercial building and a parking modification permit to allow for a reduction to the required number of parking spaces, finding the project categorically exempt under section fifteen three oh one of CEQA.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Sizer?
Aye.
Commissioner Ostrowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Graves? Last, your bookbinder?
Aye.
Chair Jing? Aye. So that's passed unanimously. Decision is final, less appealed in writing to the city clerk within ten calenderies. So thank you. I actually have favor to request to my fellow commissioners and staff here. Could we take a one-minute bio break? Don't mind. Too much coffee. Your indulgence. And moving on to the star item for tonight. Special presentation by Director Eastwood.
Yes, good evening. That was a fast bio break. Okay, let me queue up the screen and I'll walk the commission through this. Okay, so the subject of this item is for the commission to review a draft code of conduct policy that's been requested by the city council. A little bit of history, on late August, August twenty-fifth, city council meeting. They, I'll make sure you can handle it, okay? They requested that the city administration, in coordination with the city attorney's office, prepare a code of conduct for all the boards and commissions in the city. And the intent of this would not be to cover ground that's already covered in state laws. Many, as commissioners will know, financial conflicts of interest are covered under state laws. Say, for example, you were to make a decision on a project where you own a property, that would be a direct financial conflict of interest, and you're barred from doing so. So that is covered ground. This code of conduct is intended to provide direction to all the boards and commissions on perceived conflicts of interest. So let me walk a bit through it. It's a one-page document. The intent of the city council is that all of the boards and commissions, I think throughout the month of October, are reviewing this, providing comments back. And then in November, I think the the target meeting is November fifteenth, the city council will consider adoption of the code of conduct. So the purpose is establish rules for everyone who serves on the boards and commissions when there is a perceived conflict of interest on any items that are considered by the city, say, the city council or board or commission. Just broad brushstrokes here, a member of the board or commission shall not participate in any decision where the member has a perceived conflict of interest. And that could be a situation where a board or commissioner is affiliated with a person or organization that's taken a position on a matter coming before the city council. And the member would appear to a reasonable and well-informed person to have aligned his or her interests with that personal organization in a way that would affect the independence, impartiality and objectivity of the member's role as a city board member or commissioner. So there's two specific examples, and the code goes on to prohibit specifically these actions. Number one, prohibiting representing, appearing for or speaking on behalf of a person or organization with which the member is affiliated on a matter that has come or will come before the city council or board or commission. Or representing, appearing or speaking on behalf of a person or organization with which the member is affiliated before another government agency, not Campbell, on a matter pending before that government agency that has come or will come before the city council or any board or commission on which the city has not made a final decision. So I thought of a couple scenarios, just to articulate a bit more what that could mean, because that always can help. So say, for example, making this up, the chair of the planning commission was also the president of the Sierra Club. And so for, there was an item that came before the city council or planning commission where you were, say, looking at riparian setbacks or sort of bird-safe policies in the Sierra Club, you know, was taking a position on that. What this would do would be to bar you as your member of the Sierra Club, knowing you're also a planning commission member from acting as a member of the Sierra Club before the city of Campbell advocating for some position. The idea here is that you you wear two hats as a member of a board or commission. You have a special hat, number one, you're in the legislative process and the decision-making process, appointed by the city to make objective decisions. And it's not supposed to intersect with your personal life. So say in your personal life, you have these affiliations with organizations or even people closely that that somehow, when you're on that, when you're outside of your role as a commissioner, you're not in any way using, there's no appearance that you're playing both sides of the table, my words, that you could be somehow leveraging your role as a commissioner and behalf of an agency to influence the city or vice versa. So that was one I thought of. Say, you were, again, part of the Sierra Club. There was some item on environmental issue. The Sierra Club's taking a position, and either A, you're you're advocating before the city on behalf of the Sierra Club. That'd be a prohibited action on this. Or two, example number two was, there's another government agency that's reviewing something that's also before the city. So again, the Sierra Club might be an example, again, making this up, that the city's working on some riparian policies that have to be approved by US Fish and Wildlife or the state. And and we're deliberating on those policies, and somehow, again, as the member of the Sierra Club, you were writing letters to the US Fish and Wildlife Service, or you were writing letters to the state advocating some position on behalf of the Sierra Club. Again, under this policy, you would be prohibited from doing that.
So can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure, go ahead.
So is it that you can't be a member of the club, or you just can't take a position on the particular topic that the Sierra Club may also be taking a position, the position on?
Well, I'll start in the broad strokes, but our attorney provide much more guidance here than I could. So I don't think there's anything that prohibits you from being affiliated in your body, I mean, in your body from any organization. It's it's avoiding a conflict where those two intersect, where you're you're intersecting your role as a commissioner with some sort of advocacy organization together, specifically when it affects the city of Campbell.
Right. So for example, in your fishing game situation, you're not necessarily, like, if you have a fishing license, you're associated with the Fish Department of Fishing Game. That suggests you have an interest in particular topics related to fishing game. So I'm kind of trying to ascertain what is the line that we're talking about here? Because I also see that somebody could be collecting social security and might be particularly interested in the topic that we just discussed.
The 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 real line is when you are appearing on behalf of this outside organization, some outside organization, not a government organization, but some outside nonprofit or corporation and advocating on their behalf before the city or before an outside government body on a matter that the city is going to be taking action on.
Okay, so you have to have a position on the topic. You have to have stated or communicated a position on the topic. It's not just a matter of being affiliated with the organization that is part of the discussion.
Correct.
I have a clarifying question as well. Does this include all state legislation? One of the things that one of the things I've done over the last year has been working in advocacy for state laws. And I know that the city council has a legislation committee. I don't know in advance which laws they will decide that the city should or should not support. Does that mean that I'm barred from personally advocating for state legislation?
And I I think we may need to to think about that more, but it doesn't, first of all, let let me state, it doesn't bar anyone from advocating on their own behalf before anyone. You could, you can always do that. The 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 real tricky part comes in when it appears you're really acting on behalf of an outside entity.
Okay, so for example, if I'm like soliciting support letters for legislation or something, and I'm doing it on behalf of an organization, because that legislation may at some point be endorsed or opposed by the city, I'm I'm barred from doing that?
To be honest, I'm not sure how that plays out in the in in with regard to legislation. I I know that wasn't something that the council had actively considered in in their deliberations. It was more with regard to applications pending legislation of the city, actions that the city would actually be taking that this policy was meant to address.
I I think I understand the 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 spirit of it. I just want to know where the boundaries are, because I did spend a lot of time this year advocating for legislation.
So in this instance, just to clarify, because I know that the city does take positions on state legislation and has used the League of California Cities perhaps to lobby its position. Just talking this out, if the city took a position on a specific piece of legislation and it was published, the question would be if you or anyone is acting as a separate advocacy organization on a on a different position, is that a conflict?
Yeah, and I want to emphasize, like, I I'm, as far as I'm aware, like, none of these questions would at any point come before the planning commission specifically. Like, we don't endorse state legislation, which is one of the reasons why I had not, like, really thought about this much before now. If this is not, if this is still a draft, I, it would be helpful to have the city council, like, be more specific about that.
So, yeah, yeah, the, oh, I'm sorry. I was saying the purpose of tonight was the your comments given to the council. So, yeah, yeah. The, oh, I'm sorry. I was saying the purpose of tonight was the, your comments given to the council and if it helps sharpen, right, sharpen the, the conflicts. That's, that's the point. Sorry, Chair.
Um, what's the definition of an outside entity? Uh, sorry, what's the definition of an outside entity?
A governmental body other than the city.
Just a government though?
No advocacy. So Sierra Club is.
Okay. In terms I, I, I think, uh, well, in terms of who you cannot appear before, an outside agency would be another governmental agency. In terms of representation, it really could be any outside entity. Other than you personally.
Okay. So if you are, an example, advocate, advocating for um, trails which could span multiple jurisdictions and cities. And you wanted to speak generally about increasing trails across California, which would potentially impact Campbell, you'd be prevented from doing that?
Only if you were speaking on behalf of some, someone or some entity other than yourself.
So you can take the position, like your own position, but you wouldn't be able to be a member of the
So if you're a member of the California trails.
You could be a member. You couldn't come before the city council and, and say, I represent the Sierra Club and we want trails.
Okay. So you can be a member, you can speak on your own behalf, but you can't say, I'm the president of this organization and I'm here speaking on behalf of the members.
Right. Or appear before another governmental body, uh, on a matter that will be coming or has come before the city and say, uh, I'm a member of the Sierra Club and I'm here to advocate for trails.
So if you, if you went to Campbell, not Campbell, sorry, Cupertino as member of the Sierra Club and said, I want more trails, would that be in breach of the code of?
Well, I, I mean, it, it would be very fact-specific. Yeah. Um, I, I don't know why trail issues would, would be coming before the city of Campbell, uh, that relate to Cupertino unless it's a trail that runs from Campbell to Cupertino, I suppose. Um, there are, there are two parts to that. Um, first of all, it has to be a matter that will come before the city of Campbell, one of either the city council or a board or commission or has come before the city of Campbell and on which the city hasn't made a final decision. Once the city's made a final decision, it's fair game where you go and who you talk to and who you represent after that.
And how, how do you know what will be coming up in front of the council or commission? And what time period does that run over? It could be a year out.
Yeah. And I think you're hearing a lot of questions because I think, you know, we're all passionate about our roles here and also passionate about other topics where we participate and or volunteer for.
I think a first question would be this on both of these points. And as Attorney Seligman mentioned, has to be an issue to which either the city is making decision, is making a decision. So sort of a kind of a order of operations, you might ask first, hey, I'm very passionate about saving whales or, or whatever. Is that item going to come before the city make a decision? The answer is no. With your attorney, I don't, I think you can move on. If the answer is yes, then you need to go and, and see to what extent there would be a conflict and how are you advocating on behalf of whom?
And so another question, is there a perceived, um, what, what problem is this? Is, is there currently a problem that the council see happening? Is it, or is it potential risk mitigation in a few dra- has there been issues like this coming up already?
I think I can speak to what motivated this. Um, if you remember a while ago, um, when we submitted the draft housing element, I had some comments that I, that I sent in. Um, I've sent a number of, of letters on behalf of a ver- a variety of cities, housing elements. I've been doing a lot of work with, um, the Campaign for Fair Housing Elements, which is a very loose knit group of people who share information and have a resource library and learn how to audit housing elements. So I signed it out of book by their campaign for fair housing elements, which I had written it entirely myself. I'd gotten some technical assistance, but it gave the impression that I was working for somebody else at the same time that I had just, um, voted on this, which is a little, which I can see why that would, why that would spook people. Um, there was also a um, an impression that I had just made up campaign for fair housing elements that to make myself sound more, you know, official, which, uh, I know some people do that. I had not done that. Um, but, but I get like, I, I think I understand the intent to make sure that like, we're not advocating on somebody else's behalf as opposed to the cities. Um, like my worry here is that there's unintended consequences that I, I doubt the city council would not have, would have wanted to prohibit me from specifically what I spent a lot of the summer doing was soliciting support letters for AB 2097 because I really cared about that. I, I don't think they would want me to prohibit me from doing that. But, um, yeah, I, I think the, we should make sure that it actually does just what we want it to do.
So, yeah, but you then you, you also, you said the city wants to make sure we're not advocating on anyone's behalf of the city. We're here to advocate on the public's behalf.
Yeah.
For the city. So.
We're, we're not advocating on behalf of a different organization, like we're not serving somebody other than, like, we're supposed to be serving the public. Um, so that we're not, you know, serving our employer or a different city or, you know, some advocacy group um, against the public. I think, I think that's the idea.
Can I ask a just clarifying question? Like, are we, if this goes into effect, are we all signing it? Is, is there, is there a premise? And then it's also mentioned sort of prohibited and don't do this, like, what happens if you do do it?
Two really good questions.
Uh, it is a scaffolding bill outside.
I don't, I don't think it's been articulated. I assume at minimum, uh, you would be acknowledging, it may would apply to all boards and commissions. So there had to be some sort of acknowledgement. I'm assuming that you've read it and understand it. As to the penalties, there's been no discussion yet. I mean, I think in the municipal code, there's the right of the city council to remove a commission, a commission member, a board member. And they probably, if there was a violation of this code, that could be the grounds using those procedures to do so.
I, I think there's opportunities here for clarification. I appreciate this is the first draft, right? It's great to get, to be, have the opportunity to give feedback. Um, personally, um, I, I, I think I'm a bit hazy about this, so you know, maybe a few more examples or some consideration of some of the feedback from the fellow commissioners would be good. Um, and then when this, uh, when this is finalized, welcome some little training session, right? Especially for new commissioners coming in as well.
Yeah. And I guess I just want to add, you know, it's, it's kind of a, a challenge in terms of a topic because we're talking about perceived conflicts of interest and we spend, you know, our years here basically removing kind of fuzzy language from the documents that we work with and focused on making things very much black and white. So I would say we need to kind of, as the chair said, make this a bit more concrete, so we don't swing the pendulum too far in terms of preventing people that who want to do good work on behalf of, you know, themselves and how they can have an impact doing that. So I think we just have to be very careful here.
Yeah.
We also don't want to recruit people who have no affiliation with any organizations because it gets them scared away.
Hmm. I, I think, I think it's a good point and building on, on that point. You know, I think it's sometimes challenging for the city to find, um, commissioners on boards. Um, you know, you, you don't want to make it overly onus, onerous, sorry, onerous, um, to intimidating, because we always really have to fill in the form, all we have financial details, if it's over a certain limit, right? You know, if there's a real problem, then it has to be addressed, but you know, you can do overkill on this, right? And nobody wants to sign up.
And I'd also just like to throw in there that like, I'm, I'm very in favor of, you know, not having, like, not having the perception of a conflict of interest. Like, one of the things, like, I have, I call into a lot of public comments and I used to say, you know, I'm a planning commissioner for the city of Campbell, but I'm speaking here only for myself. And I'm aware at this point that that absolutely does not cut it. And like luckily I do not have a, like, famous or well-recognizable name, so I could just say that I'm me and people will think that I'm just some guy. As opposed to, oh, this person is using his position in order to get more clout. Like that, that, I wasn't trying to do that in the first place.
I'm sure you thought you were being transparent.
Yeah, yeah.
And it got misunderstood.
Yeah, but I, I am, I am perfectly happy to, you know, make sure that I don't do that. That wasn't saying that I was absolute, that I, I really was really keen on doing. I just would like to, you know, have clear rules and you know, make sure that we're not make sure that we can still advocate for the things we want to advocate for in a way that doesn't conflict with our, our duties here.
You know, I think it's, you know, it's, it's really, uh, the perception is always worse than the real fact. And I think in this divisive world we live in nowadays, everybody's ready to jump on anything that had perception of conflict. So I'm just trying to be using common sense and be as careful as you can about there's any, if there's any possibility, just like getting it out there. So it's not anything that anybody's going to be perceiving. We're, we're lucky in Campbell that we've really had a real good commission, good city council and, but look at some of these other cities and, yeah. You know, again, look at the federal government, yeah. Just for example, like, you know, they, they, the senate can't, they can't, they, the senators can still buy individual stocks.
Yeah.
And that's an issue that, you know, it's so, but it's, yeah, it's, it's tough. It is tough.
Um, uh, two things. I, I'm fairly clear on what, what you're trying to do here. And, you know, I think the representing, appearing for, speaking on behalf to me is clear to me. Uh, I mean, possibly since there's some of the other commissioners' comments in terms of, you know, well, can I just be a member? It's like, maybe that can be clarified, but this does not preclude you from being a member of any organization. It's just a question of, of actually representing, appearing or speaking for them. Um, because, you know, you could, you could apply that to anything. Your business, your work, your, the corporation you work for, the union you belong to. I mean, you know, just because you're a union member, um, doesn't mean, you know, because we, we, you know, somebody comes up and says, well, you have to have union labor in Campbell. Yeah. It's like, well, you could be a union member. You just, you just can't come up and represent the union in front of the planning commission and city council on, on something that's in front of the city. So to me, it's fairly clear, but maybe there's some additional wording that can clarify the fact that it's, it's okay to have a membership or, or, you know, or even, even, you know, like I said, you could be working for an organization as well. Uh, that, that, but as long as it's not necessarily related. And I think the question about what does it mean in terms of, um, relevant to the city, it's like, to me, it's like about being in the pipeline. It's like you can come up and talk about something that maybe is some futuristic thing that the city's not applying itself to, you know, you, you know, uh, I want to advocate for, um, you know, uh, the city to have mass transit pods, you know? Well, we're not, we're not, we don't have anything on the agenda about mass transit pods, right? So it doesn't mean, um, you couldn't be advocating for that in the future. But, but since it's not on the agenda, it's not in the pipeline. It, it, to me, it's, it's not a conflict of interest. And as far as perception, perception is part of the ethical standard. Um, it's the ethical standard that we take, you know, that is, that is in the Brown Act, I believe, is what we take our test on. The perception isn't black and white. Okay? We can't write down what perception specifically means. That's, that's more of a subjective, even though we do, we're trying to do objective, it is subjective, right? So that's just the nature of the beast. And I think, you know, we have to try and understand ourselves with perception of, of conflict of interest is. And in this case, it's no different than, you know, other things that would be a, a perception, uh, because that's the ethical standard that the state has set up and that we have to abide by. So I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. Thank you. Is that, um, sufficient feedback?
Absolutely. Um, I mean, our attorney, myself, will write up all these notes and make sure the council gets a lot my personal observation, a lot of good questions and feedback.
Thank you, everybody. Um, move on to the, uh, director's report, if I may. Director Reese Wood?
Okay. In other news, last but not least, uh, just a couple of updates. One, did want to let the commission know, um, we did submit our draft housing element to the state about a month and a half ago. We expect comments back by November fourth, actually the required to. We did have a meeting with the HCD staff, uh, twice over the last two weeks. And really, um, constructive. They had some good things to say about our housing element. Um, and they had some constructive things to say about housing elements. So, so, so more work to come, but I just wanted to keep you updated. Uh, HCD's been good on reaching out and at least giving us a heads up on the things they're focused on. So that'll be coming along. Number one. Number two, uh, you've probably already paid attention to a lot of activity at the state. Um, uh, so this is a time of year where state legislation is being signed into law by the governor. Governor's been extremely active, uh, in the housing land use world. You've probably heard this, a lot of new bills coming to effect. She had very quick top level, three items. Um, and of course, we'll come back later with more information. Uh, one is AB 20097, you probably heard, now prohibits parking, uh, requirements on any, literally any type of development within a half mile of, um, I think the term is a major transit stop or a good transit stop, which is both our light rail stations and our major bus lines. So, um, so that's one. Uh, two, uh, AB 2011, and there's a partner bill I can't remember, effectively states in all commercial zones, uh, all cities and counties now have to allow affordable housing development uh, by right. So it's sort of preempts, uh, police powers on separating land uses and you can do affordable housing in commercial zones. And then last but not least, there's a kind of a small handful of, um, ADU bills that, uh, came into effect, some that I think, um, a lot more ADUs and front air setbacks and, and more design considered, uh, accommodations for ADUs. A lot more bills behind that, but I'd say if you, if you had to take the top three on, on sort of, um, cities and counties have to, to go ahead and, and sort of reset how they're approaching things. Those are the ones we're going to have to deal with. That was two. Uh, three, I just want to give a heads up to the commission. So we're hard at work on the objective standards. Uh, new moniker we're using is the multifamily development and design standards. It's a mouthful, but it sort of accurately, um, makes clear this isn't single family. Uh, one upcoming thing, we want to do, um, a joint city council, planning commission, uh, informational briefing. Because as we get deeper into this, we're learning the approach our design consultant is using is a bit different than, than normally used. And you have to, you have to sort of adapt to their approach. And so rather than just bring standards to you in like a month and a half and, and not understand how, how we got here, we thought it would be really useful for you and the council, you and the council to hear sort of the approach and the understanding of how these, uh, development standards are put together. So we proposed a, a special joint, uh, informational briefing on November first. That's a normal council meeting. Uh, we're still getting final confirmation from the clerk, but if it happens, it likely be at five forty-five that day. And Ken and I will circle back and put that on your calendars, but we did want to give you a heads up and the intent is to try and get a, a good educational understanding of how these, uh, standards will work before you start looking at them and commenting on them. And then finally, last but not least, back to the housing element, uh, wanted to let you know, we'll be scheduling, uh, two rounds of meetings with you and the council between around Thanksgiving and the end of the year. The point is to take all the HCD feedback, um, and describe how we're going to do some modifications to the housing element, number one. And number two, the, the thought, if you'll think back to when we, uh, identified our housing opportunity sites, we picked a very big number arenas, about three thousand. The number of units that went in is about six thousand five hundred. And I know that the council members, the thought was to, to use And I know that the council members, the thought was to to use the EIR process and the public review process and the HCD process to get feedback and whittle that number down a little bit to pick the best sites that we think we're going to develop. So as part of that November, December timeframe, again, number one, modifications responding to HCD. Number two, look at how we narrow those sites down from six thousand five hundred to pick the best housing sites that will go into the final housing development. So again, between Ken and I, we'll work with you on your schedules. I think we're looking at one normal planning commission meeting. It is the week of Thanksgiving. So I hope you don't have travel plans that whole week, that Tuesday. And then probably a special planning commission meeting somewhere on around December eighth. And that's all I have available for answering any questions if you have them.
Thank you, thank you.
Can you broadly outline the constructive things that HC had to say?
Yeah, I mean, I'd say top level things. They had some constructive feedback on having us focus more on a program for developing what's called ELI housing, emergency low income. And so we've actually started to talk about internally how to do that. So again, that was one category. Two, there was a little sensitivity from them, which I was surprised on, on the approach of picking a big number to start and narrowing down. I want to talk to them more about that. I'm personally, I was being penalized on using more holistic approach was an issue, but they did bring up a sensitivity us on on narrowing the number from six thousand five hundred smaller. What's that?
What's the target?
Well, the, the range that we have is three thousand. HCD has recommended a minimum buffer of thirty percent above that. So that would put us at yeah, yeah, right.
And we're at six.
Right now, we're at six thousand five hundred.
So they're afraid we're going to get to our number too fast.
They weren't clear. Again, we have to talk to them. I, you know, my, again, my sense is we wouldn't, we shouldn't be penalized on the mains if it's the same ends. But again, that was an issue that came up in the conversation. There's a lot of small things, a couple of things on firmly further fair housing came up once or twice and and nothing jumps to mind right now, but those are probably the big issues that came out.
Thank you.
I, I got it. I got two questions. One, one is, so I had read something on that, on that bill was passed about the half mile zero parking requirement. And it wasn't clear to me about the tran, the transit stop, you know. Something I read made it seem like would only be mass transit like like layout, but now you're saying it's also, it's any, any bus stop, any bus stop is what you're saying, right, as well.
Yeah, there's, there's a, well, as if the ring state law, there's a little ambiguity in all this, but there is a current definition in state law on major transit stop that defines both a fixed transit point like a light rail station and also bus stops. Going from memory that have fifteen minute headways, where there are at least two bus stops together. Now, immediately after the bill was passed, reached out to VTA. Because as some might know, the bus stops aren't all these fifteen minute headways from the beginning of of history till the end of history, VTA will often adjust their their transit schedules. So we're trying to get some guidance. This came up as a huge point when I had started here as director because there was a San Jose project next to Campbell that had used that provision with bus stops to get some accommodations in their density bonus. Anyways, long story short, we're trying to get more guidance from VTA with the state on defining specifically bus stops, knowing the variability on how bus schedules happen, how that will be defined.
And the other question I have is and I don't, I don't talk to my son about this. But I read an article, a better article and about the fact that I guess it was in the Murphy or something, but about like how lots of these are not meeting their deadline, right? They're not going to meet their, they're not going to meet their January thirty first deadline, whatever. And they were talking about HCD emphasizing the parcel, the inventory being proving that that it's very likely to be developed, right? So obviously, our sixty five hundred or whatever, I, you know, you know, I don't know how many, what percentage of that is like likely, I don't think it's probably more than half, much more than half, but but so are you hearing that from them that that they they want you to pull it down partly because they want to see the most, you know, what's really a likely development?
I didn't, which was surprising, but I, we, we were clear with them on our timeline that a target is March and they seemed fine with it. I'll say they were very impressed that we are doing the housing element, general housing element, general plan and zoning standards together. And that you'll see soon with the zoning standards, we're doing test fits that really document on a site how you could actually fit that many units on a site with the zoning standards. So I'll just say when we we described that to them, they were impressed. A lot of times cities will go out and say, hey, you can develop seventy five unit acres per acre on the site with really not substantiating how that's going to happen. But when I described through our zoning process and what Opticus is doing, how we're going to get really detailed on showing that, they were pretty impressed.
Actually, that's a good segue. On the agenda, there was a report from the sorry, the residential design standard subcommittee, which today is just me, I can is now a good time for that? Cool. So apologies, I missed that.
My, my error.
That's, that's quite all right. So on September twenty eighth, Commissioner Kamkar and myself attended a developer forum. There will be more of these. There is another one on October nineteenth and I believe on the twenty first, which will also be going to. So we got I talked to a lot of developers, I listened to a lot of conversations with developers and the way I would sum this up was like I have seen up until now, the main thing blocking development being our restrictive zoning standards. So it was really interesting to hear about other things that could restrict development. So for example, even though parking requirements are now essentially gone for I think about forty percent of the city's area, just counting our three, our three light rail stations. The developers say, for example, you, like, I can't get financing unless I provide roughly one parking space per unit. It's like nobody believes that anyone will want to, will not use that full parking space. Below market rate developers say we generally provide like between half and three quarters of a space per unit, but there still are. I, I know there's this worry that when parking requirements go away, parking will all disappear, but it looks like like that's, I guess, the natural level of parking based on the way the city is now. And this goes along with perception that everybody in the city drives. So like making it so that we don't need that much parking or aren't perceived to need that much parking will involve better bike infrastructure, maybe more apartments near services, which is all, which I think is, is something that makes it very fortuitous that we are in fact doing our general plan and housing element and zoning code all at the same time, because these things are all kind of interlinked. One other thing that I noticed was that that we seem to be in danger of triple dipping on adjacency. And I'll explain what I mean by that. That when we placed our high density sites, we were concerned about them being too close to low density, single family homes. In addition to that, Opticus provides certain kinds of frontage requirements that, you know, the, the interface between this type of building has to be this type and it can't just be like a, a blank wall, which is a way of making things more compatible. But additionally, we're talking about adding large setbacks or adjacency height requirements, which may make it difficult to actually hit the densities that we're looking for. So for example, like if you set a parcel to be seventy five units an acre, but then you can't, don't allow seventy five unit an acre buildings on the entire lot, you're not going to get seventy five units an acre, for example. There was also a lot of conflict between some of the drawings that Opticus brought in saying like, look, you can have these, you know, small scale buildings and the developer is saying, no, the only thing we can really build that we can get that density with is something called a wrap building, which is a term I learned that day, or a Texas donut, which is a parking garage with a building wrapped around the, with apartments wrapped around the outside. And that is sort of like a large block. You've seen those buildings if you've ever been to Santana Row. They don't look like a parking garage, but the inside is sort of a parking garage core with apartments around the outside. And that's sort of a, a very large block of building. Yeah, those are the, those are the notes that I have. It was extremely informative and I look forward to learning a lot more about this stuff. That's the summary of like six pages of notes.
Thank, thank you. Well done for persevering and on this and being so diligent. If that's it, I'll call the close to the meeting until the next regular planning commission meeting on the twenty fifth of October. Thank you all. Good night.